The meeting of the South Borough Zoning Board of Appeals for Wednesday, May 21st, 2025. We have three members here in person and two on Zoom, so we are good as far as the quorum goes. First item hearing we have on the agenda is 154 Turnpike Road. Do you want to read the notice?
Yep. The Board of Appeals of the Town of South Borough will hold a public hearing in the McCalliv Hearing Room, 17 Common Street, Wednesday, May 21st, 2025, at 7:00 PM with regard to the petition of 154 Turnpike Road LLC, 154 Turnpike Road, South Borough, Mass. The petitioner is seeking a special permit to allow wall signs above the maximum allowable height. The property is located in the Business Highway Zoning District and relief is requested under Section 174-9 and Section 174-11.
Okay.
Hi Shannon.
Hi, how you guys doing?
Good, how are you?
Good, thank you for having me.
If you could just name an address or your name and your role here, please?
Yep, Shannon Boyce, Real Estate Permitting Manager for Capital Group Properties as managing agent for 154 Turnpike Road LLC.
Very good, thank you. And do you have anything that you want, you have to present or you just want to discuss?
We can just discuss. I think you guys have my entire packet, so I think we're good to go if you are.
Yep. So i- in that case, I'm just going to note that what the planning board's memo is. As far as the sign scale and the design in harmony with other signage and similar structures, they were divided on that because it, and there, the note says, "Sign should be in compliance with the bylaw and 20 feet in height, same as other signs on the building." So what do you, what you, what's your, what's your thought on that in, in keeping it within the 20 feet?
It's not possible. And it's the only sign that we're asking to put above the 20 feet. Every other way it complies with the bylaw. So I don't think that we're asking for anything outrageous. It's
Okay.
It's similarly designed to other signs within that district and the only thing we're requesting is that we hang it above 20 feet so that it's within the floor range of where that concierge PT is on. So they got the second floor.
Okay.
If we try to put it on the first floor, if you look at that building, there's no, there's just no way to put it on the first floor because all that barring is already taken up by first floor businesses.
Yeah. I, I
Yeah.
I did take a look at it, Shannon, and I, I think I understand what you're saying that
Yeah.
Hold on, I, I'm going through the packet as it loads. So i- if, the way it looks is you've, you've got it above the, the windows on the second floor, correct?
Yes, so it's on that, yeah. Yeah, I think I should have circled it on the, on the plan we gave too, so you could see where we're intending to hang it.
Yep. So I, I think, I'll, I'll wait for it to be up on the screen, but
There it is.
Excellent. So it, it looks to me like it either goes there, if you put it below the windows, I, I, there's like no really good effect there. You clearly can't put it where the windows are unless
Yeah.
you condense it into some weird, small shape and then you won't be able to see it.
Yeah, that, that literally, we, we had Ann from our viewpoint, you know, design it for us and that seemed to be the only place that we really could pop a sign up there for them.
Okay.
Especially when you consider visibility and everything else, you know?
Okay. Just, just following again, and I, and I'm, you know, I'm using this as a bit as a guideline, right? Sign, size, shape, and placement serve to define or enhance architectural elements of the building. So it fits, yes, four, no, zero. Again, the only two were the size and in harmony with their signage. But just to, to sort of put it in perspective, the signage that is on that building, other than this, is all for first floor businesses, correct?
Yes, all those, all those first floor businesses. It's too bad this is cut off, but below that is the entryway at the front, fronting of Route 9. You see the little entryway below where this sign is. But, oh yeah, you can kind of see it. So that's the entryway.
There you go.
Very good. On that gray bar, you can see where, a little corner of one sign, but all the signs are basically like choo, choo, choo across that and around back where the businesses basically are at. So we try to keep them aligned kind of where the businesses are at in the building. And concierge PT is pretty much, it's right there. They got that whole top floor.
Okay.
Shannon, where is the sign for code red?
My, oh, yeah, this puts us in an awkward, sorry about that. Where was the sign for code red?
That was right there. That's the same exact spot.
That's what I thought, okay.
Yeah.
So the previous tenant, I don't know if they ever fully occupied the place. I do remember seeing code red on the building. Now I, I'm blanking as to where it was exactly, but it was basically in the same area?
Yeah.
Okay.
I only saw the outline. That's what I saw was the code red outline. Yeah.
Okay. So, so it otherwise seems to be, you know, agreeable. Yeah, there's a statement there about they don't believe the bylaw allows for preapproval of future signs. But we already talked about that the last time. Exactly. We had a, we had a, a meeting, right Shannon? Because we, we talked about that exact topic, so we don't really need to go over that again. Okay. So Doris, did you have any questions or comments regarding the application?
Well, actually, I do, I do want to go over that one time because their, their opinion was that I, that if we were to replace the sign for a new tenants in the future, that we'd have to go back to them.
Okay.
But in my last meeting with you, you both, you all agreed that it's not tenant specific, it's for the building. So if we get a new tenant and they want to sign there, we can do that. So I, I just want to make sure that that's the understanding because that's not what Planning Board was saying to me.
Okay.
They, they want us to come back every time.
Okay, yeah, that, I mean, what I'm seeing, I, I, it was, the way it's written, I don't, it does, it's not clear to me. This report is for this particular sign, concierge PT. The Planning Board does not believe the bylaw allows for preapproval of future signs, given the specific criteria that must be reviewed for each sign. But I think what we talked about is, you know, if you're following the same basic design and footprint, that we didn't, we don't really see why you'd have to come back to get the exact same approval again. That seems wasted.
Right, I agree. I don't think the bylaw requires that, but yeah, that's kind of where we're at, I guess. That's sort of the disconnect.
I think the concern is, it's one thing to have that sign. I think the concern is like, oh, now it's slightly bigger or now it's slightly different. I think it's kind of
Well, that's why I wanted to do the, oh, I apologize for interrupting, but that's why I wanted to do this, the way that we were doing it with the wall signs, because then we would have those parameters and we would know exactly what we could put in each spot. And, and I just thought it would just be a, you know, a, a better, more organized way to do that. We weren't going to, i- if you gave us the parameters, yes, you can hang signs above 20 feet. They have to be the, within the square footage and comply in every other way, but they can go above 20 feet, then that's what we would do. We wouldn't suddenly have a hundred square foot sign we put up there because there would be the parameters and the special permits that you guys dropped for us.
Right.
So that's kind of the position I have on all of these.
Yeah.
But my last meeting with Planning, they, they kind of explained to me that their position is pretty much every sign, if it's not going to comply with the bylaw and it doesn't matter if we already have a special permit for a sign in that spot, they want me to come back to them. And I just don't see that in the bylaw. That's just my opinion.
Yeah. I, I, you know, I'll take the action to look into that a little bit further. I, I should, I should be more well-versed on that. So I'll, I'll take that action. So
Thank you.
So Doris, any questions or comments?
You know, I, I am, so
The microphone?
No, my mic's up. I am
Oh, because my mic turned it on.
Could you put that back up Laura?
Oh, yeah. Sorry.
Just two points. I, I do not think, and I do know about the prior sign, but I do not think that sign is in blend with the other signs. The other signs are, it's not so much the height, but it doesn't really blend in with the other signs on the building. And the, the second point, and it is allowed on, on Route 9, is, and maybe with the exception of the Starbucks, but I didn't see it lit up at all, there's no back illumination on the lower floor signs, which is, again, just not in, you know, not in harmony with the other signs of the building. So I have a bit of a problem with that.
Well, I, I would just note that I think Route 9 is the one place you can do it.
Yeah, you can. You definitely can do it. Let, let me go this, let me take, so that's like two changes in one permit. It's the, the height. I can't, I can't speak to the width, the dimensions on the width. It's got two pieces on it.
Well, I, it, there's, there's the square footage and it meets the, the square footage requirement.
It meets the square footage. It's just the height.
Yes.
It's only the height, yeah.
And the hardship is, is you can't put it anywhere. So I get that part, but I'm just saying, I do not think it's in harmony with the other signs of the building and the illumination on the building. And there was a point brought up in some other hearing where, are we going to have to light up all the lower signs? I'm just saying. It's not that we, we take each permit
I mean,
on its own merit. I'm, it's just I'm bringing it up. I'm not, I'm just bringing it up. We're going to have to, you know, light up
May I ask a question?
Sure.
May I ask a question about that? Let's say we had a tenant with a, one of the lower signs that wanted to redesign and they wanted to light it up because that's allowed on 9. They're not going above 20 feet for those signs. Would we have to come back for a special permit? Or since that's allowed on 9, don't we just have to go to the Building Department and get a sign permit?
If, yeah, if you're following
Do you have to go back for a special permit for the, for a light up sign on, on 9?
I, I don't believe you have to because I think the code allows in, on Route 9 for you to have a light up sign.
Well, let me, let me put another angle on it.
I believe so.
I'm not, I'm just, I'm not like so positioned on this. I'm just saying, when you combine two things, one and one here does not make two, one and one here can make four. You're getting, you know, the maximum width on the sign and then you get the backlighting and then you're going to get the overlook over to Route 9, which, so you, you take advantage of that. So I don't see one plus one equal two at all. That's what I'm saying. And I'm just thinking about it, David. That's
Okay.
Okay. So I'm kind of with the Planning Board
Yeah.
on the, just on that point because it's, it's, it's the illumination as well as the height. It's, you can't separate the two for the visibility. I mean, you get your cake and eat it too this way.
Yeah.
Commercially, you want your cake and eat it too. You want to be visible. Yeah, we want to take advantage of that.
Time out. I'm going to take a little different angle on it. The signage law is, is deep and thick in the town and a lot of effort went into, to that. So they're just paying some type of reasonable, what was the intent of the signage law? And, and that's, that's where I'm coming from on it. So I don't really want to make an argument out of it.
Okay.
Just it's, it's, it's bigger than it would be, in my opinion, and so
Yeah, it's
Yep.
Yeah, it's the height. Okay. Thank you. Paul?
This is the no longer technically challenged
Sorry guys. Hi. I don't, I don't have any questions. Just the, the same thing we've said at the last few meetings. Any, you know, any encouragement of use of office space these days, which is very challenging, I'm, I'm in favor for. I, I do feel this is a hardship due to the design of the building and trying to get signage for everyone. So if, if that helps, you know, with, you know, leasing up space and, and, you know, providing a good service, I'm, I'm, I don't have any further questions. I'm in favor of this.
Thank you.
Doug?
Yeah, I would agree and echo Paul. And also Mike pointed out the one thing I was going to ask, that there was a code red sign here before, which I remember. So given they've taken over the entire floor, I'm in favor of it. I do believe there's a hardship. And again, I agree with Paul that I like the alternative uses that we're filling this office space. So I don't have any questions or concerns.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. We have anybody else with a hand up on the Zoom call? I don't think we have anybody here from the public who's going to be speaking about it.
Nope.
Okay. Shannon, did you have anything else you wanted to add or, or question?
Nope, I think we, we covered most of the questions I had. I think I'm good. Thank you.
Okay. In that case, if we have no, do we, do we have any further questions for the applicant or are we ready to close the public hearing and discuss as a board?
Make a motion to close the public hearing?
I'll second their motion.
Okay. All right, motion to close the public hearing has been made with a second. I'll in favor respond with aye, opposed nay. Doris?
Nay.
To close the public hearing?
Oh, yes, who's closed the public hearing?
Okay.
Second.
Mike?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Doug?
Yes.
And Williams is yes. Okay, discussion as a board. Doris, you still feel that doesn't fit?
No, I really don't think
Please, someone
Sorry, could you, could you mute please? Okay, thanks.
I think it's going to look really bright. That's, that's my concern. I, I just think it's going to look, I mean, I can't see it illuminated. I really want to get it up there. I hear all the concerns of the board. You know, we want to make it commercial friendly. It, it's just, it, it's the design. It's the design and it's not in continuity. And I'm not as concerned that everyone's going to come and say backlight my sign. I've got a problem with it, yeah.
Okay.
Just got a problem with it. I don't have a problem putting the 20 feet at all. I just have the problem with the combo.
Okay.
Okay, so, got to get a sign up there. I see the hardship.
Yeah. Mike, you're, you're good with it?
I'm totally good with it. It's Route 9. It's, it's really, to me, it's just about the corridor and the location of where it is. Even if it was in a different part of town or something like that. But it's Route 9. They need to have the height. You know, it, it's, to me, this looks just the same as the code red sign to me.
Yeah, okay. And I mean, you know, I would also note that the neighbor across the street is a reservoir. So I, I, I agree with your points on Route 9 and, and the size. I, I hear what you're saying, Doris.
Absolutely, I hear you.
I, I, but
Yeah.
I think given
We often say, and I'm, I'm not a super tree, I'm a moderate tree hugger, but we often say that the lighting doesn't matter, but I'm, I'm going to say the lighting matters. I don't even know, yeah, you know, the lighting matter. I just wish it was designed differently. Also, I don't know what the effect is coming out. It's already a T-bone on the intersection. I don't know. I'm not an engineer. I'm an accountant.
Didn't we do a much bigger sign for Ken's Steakhouse? And I think it looks really nice.
Oh yeah, the one on the building? Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, it was. That one, that one
That was in continuity. I remember, I remember that. I remember that decision.
And that's set further back from Route 9.
It was set a lot further back.
If you complied, I think it
Yeah.
Be kind of hard to see.
No, but I'm just saying, like, there's an illuminated big sign on Route 9.
There's many illuminated big signs.
That's kind of mine.
Yeah.
I hear you with the lighting, just from light pollution and everything else. But like, there's also like
Yeah, this, I would say change the design. That would be, put it up, but change the, change the lighting. But, you know, I've got, I can hear what the board's saying and it's okay if I dissent and
Oh yeah.
Yeah, okay if I dissent.
Absolutely.
And that's, and I want a sign there. Don't get me wrong. It's, it's what I said. It's, I think I'm pretty positioned on it. So
Okay.
You know how I get.
Oh, no, I know. I do. I do right now.
You do know how I get. Friendly, but, but positioned. When I think I'm, when I think I've got a different opinion, sure.
Sure.
Yeah.
Okay, well
Paul?
Yeah, Paul and, and Doug, are you, you two okay with the, the, the application as written?
I'm, I'm okay with everything.
Yep, same here.
Me wasting time and a great time.
Sorry, Doug?
Yeah, same here.
Okay. All right. Because special, is special permit four, one. We have to have at least four, I believe.
At least four.
At least four, okay. So I, I mean, the thing I wanted to, I wanted to avoid is if it's going to be a no, then I, I mean, for the applicant, I think I would be saying, you know, that you might be better off withdrawing without prejudice, but at four to one, we can be approved, yes.
If I may, if it's helpful
Thank you.
According to the code, the illumination is allowed by right. So the only relief they're asking for here is
Yeah, yeah, yeah. No, I, right. I, I, I agree, I agree with that. And, and that was part of the discussion with, with Doris. It is allowed by right. She has a right to have that opinion. But the illumination specifically is allowed on Route 9. So, so I think I feel, I feel comfortable with it as written if we want to, if we want to just take a motion to approve as written.
I make a motion to approve as drafted?
Second.
All right, we have a motion to approve. The application is drafted. With a second, all in favor, respond with aye, opposed nay. Mike?
Aye.
Doris?
Nay.
Nay?
As in girl can take five.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Doug?
Aye.
And Williams aye. Okay. The application's approved. Congratulations.
Thank you.
And you, I don't know.
Shannon, I'll have this drafted in the next couple of weeks. Our filing deadline for this is June 4th. So it'll be filed on or before that date. You know the drill.
Yep.
I'll keep you updated though.
All right. Thank you guys so much. Have a great night.
All right, thanks Shannon. You too.
Bye.
Okay, and yeah, we're past 7:15. 250 Turnpike Road, FD 250 Turnpike LLC special permit for a wall sign. Do you have the?
The Board of Appeals of the Town of South Borough will hold a public hearing in the McCalliv Hearing Room, 17 Common Street, Wednesday, May 21st, 2025, at 7:15 PM with regard to the petition of FD 250 Turnpike LLC, 250 Turnpike Road, South Borough, Mass. The petitioner is seeking a special permit to allow a wall sign that exceeds the maximum area in height and a standing sign that exceeds the maximum area. The property is located in the industrial and residence A zoning district. Relief is requested under Section 174-9 and Section 174-11.
All right. You're here to represent?
Good evening. George Bondon here on behalf of FD 250 Turnpike LLC.
Good evening. George Bondon here on behalf of FD 250 Turnpike LLC. And, um, I have nothing further to add, uh, to Ms. Davis's introduction, except for, as we know, this wall sign is existing. It's on the building right now and the board has enjoyed the benefit of conducting their analysis in real time.
Um, just if I, if I could, um, the background behind the sign is up and now we're here?
Correct. Um, and perhaps, I don't want to misspeak here, but I believe there were verbal approvals as to the wall sign and the standing sign that, which is the next agenda item, that, uh, are in question. And these, these signs were, um, I believe verbally approved by a former building commissioner. I'm unsure which one. But, um, that is the reason why the applicant had gone ahead and fabricated these signs and installed them before a special permit was applied for.
Because a verbal had been granted?
Correct.
Interesting.
And then it wasn't until, uh, we, we've had a sign permit pending and then it wasn't until Commissioner Lund had, uh, come into office. And, and then at that point, he noticed that the pen, the building permit was just simply pending. And, um, when I had come in on behalf of, uh, when, when applying for the special permit for the standing sign, he had noticed and mentioned to me that, uh, the wall sign is non-compliant as well. And he asked me to seek a special permit for the wall sign as well, and that's why we're here.
Okay. All right. I, I'm not even sure how to comment on how we got here, but here we are.
That's what I mean.
Yeah. Do we know which commissioner?
I have no, no, I believe it, it predates me, so I'm unsure.
Yeah, and, yeah, well, it, it, and it kind of draws an interesting contrast to where we are right now, which is we have an acting building commissioner, so, uh, that, this is just commentary, obviously. I mean, if you're granted a verbal by someone who was the, the building commissioner at the time, or somebody who, you know, your predecessor.
Correct.
I, I mean, it's like, we, you can't put the genie back in the bottle, really. So, just, um, again, because I think I try to do this where we have these, these sign issues. Or, I'm sorry, applications, the planning board. The standing sign was yes, two, no, three, area size too large. Oh, oh, okay. Wall sign, yes, two, no, three. Architectural elements question. Standing sign, NA. Wall sign, five, yes, no, zero. For the, let's see, for In Harmony, both signs, five to zero in favor of, yeah, in favor. Sign materials, coloring, letter, letter, letter style. Three to two on the standing sign, five to zero on the wall sign. Location and illumination are not judged to present a safety hazard. Uh, you've got a four to one on the standing sign, five to zero on the wall sign. And then it should be noted that the signs were already installed. So I'm just gonna note, it's not. It doesn't come across as a strong opposition here. It's almost a little bit principled. And on some of the questions here, it, they, it is five to zero. And, um, maybe it's not a good parallel, but we were faced with something several years ago. Something more complicated. It was an installed pool and we decided, we elected not to move the pool. I mean, I, we certainly, you know, I, every, every ZBA member needs to chime in, of course, but I've been by and, uh, I, I don't, I'll just say, I didn't go, wow, that really, that really is awful. It stands out. It doesn't really fit here. I, I've not been struck that way by it. Um, I certainly welcome any, any comments and questions from the board, though, um, and how they feel on the, the existing signs. Mike?
Yeah, I, I couldn't have said it much better. The milk's out of the cow on this.
Yeah.
I, I, what, so we're, we're gonna impose a hardship on a business owner that sought permission, was granted authority whether correctly or incorrectly. They relied upon that. I looking at the, I'm literally on my, on my, my screen looking at this. I have no issue.
Oh, that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Just, the milk's out of the cow.
Yeah.
I, I, I have no issue.
I, I did, I did notice that sign, but I do, I do think what you're saying, David, is we had the pool was in and it had several large problems with it, that.
Yeah.
They thought they were doing the right thing. And we couldn't turn the pool around and get it off the property line, if I could call that.
It was, it was in the setbacks too.
It was the setbacks.
Correct. It wasn't.
In the fence.
It was on the wrong property.
And the fence, and the fence.
And the fence, yeah.
So that really has no neighbors, other than what's gonna be behind it probably shortly. It's illuminated for sure. But it's a hardship of, you know, I'm just assuming. Everyone's telling the truth on this one.
Yeah, and, and, I mean.
So I, I feel, I feel on this one, uh, and just to, like, because they're so unique. That's why I like to always come back on the different sites. This is a large building which can support. This is, this is, this is a large building where you would be scaled against, you might as well not put a sign at all.
Yeah.
That, that's what, and I hold them, um, all uniquely. And, um, so I'm, I'm hearing this, this issue. And then we have the, we have the other sign that's out on the, um, the standing sign.
Yeah.
Yeah. There, what, what was the tenant before that? I'm gonna say, who was the tenant? I knew the tenant before that and, uh, there was a sign on that building, wasn't there not?
I.
CSW's.
I don't really remember, honestly.
Yeah, no, there, it was Case, Case something. It's Cas. Cas, thank you. So the Cas sign was.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, the Cas sign was there and, and placed. It's always, um, what makes this sign. I gotta say, what makes the sign kind of unique is the color. I've just thrown it out there. The color's rather unique on this particular sign.
Yeah.
You do, it's eye-catching.
I will add, and, and I'm sorry to interrupt Chair Williams, but directly across Route 9 is Carnova that has a sign.
Yes.
Equally as high and equally as large.
Oh, yeah. Yes, you're right. That's, that's, that's a, that's a good point. Uh, and the, the, the sign bylaw also, if I remember it correctly, is you, you, you can't be illuminated past 10 PM.
That's right. Correct, and the planning board had made mention of that to me at the last hearing. And I ensured that the timer's set to shut off at 10 PM. It turns on at 6 PM and shuts off at 10 now.
Okay. All right.
Okay, I don't know the other board members.
Okay. Uh, Doug?
No comments or concerns. I'm good.
Paul?
Likewise, no comments or concerns. I'm good.
Okay. Uh, anyone from the public? Or another board?
One person on Zoom, but no raised hands.
No raised hand, okay.
Make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
All right, motion to close the public hearing has been made with a second. All in favor, respond with aye. All opposed, nay. Doris?
Aye.
As a golden use. I don't practice.
We're just, we're just happy Paul's actually connected.
All right, he muted.
Um, all right, so Doris, sorry.
Aye, close the public hearing.
Yes.
Mike? All right, uh, Doug?
Aye.
And background, Paul?
Aye.
There we go. And Williams' aye, okay. I, I would say we don't have much to debate here.
Make, make a motion to approve the, uh, application as drafted.
Second.
All right, motion to approve as drafted has been made with a second. All in favor, respond with aye. Oppose nay. Doris?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
Doug?
Aye.
And Williams' aye. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Really, I don't know if there's a lot that Laura's gonna add to it now, since they're already installed, so.
I'll have the decision for you by June 4th and we'll get that filed. I'll keep you updated.
Thank you, Laura.
Yeah.
Okay.
Looks good.
It looks good. The death, I mean, the work is how they did that, right, this?
Mm-hmm. It's self-storage, the whole building.
Okay, great, Shannon.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, um.
They are great.
So, the third hearing we have on the agenda tonight is also 250 Turnpike Road. Uh, this is the comprehensive permit.
Correct.
Uh, my understanding is you're looking to, uh, continue.
Correct, and, um, the purpose of the continuance is so that Lucas Environmental has a chance to read and digest and comment on the recent migration study that we've, uh, produced. So, uh, Laura, I'm not sure if you've had any conversations with them or they've indicated how long they'll need to do that, but, um.
Okay.
If they, if they haven't, then I would suggest, I'm, I'm unsure how long at this point. I, I would suggest that the board would be open to it, maybe a special meeting, um, in two weeks. If not, we can, uh, continue it to the normally scheduled, I believe, June 18th.
Did you say the 18th? Yeah.
18th meeting, yes.
Does that sound correct?
June 18th?
June 18th.
Yes, that is the next meeting. Um, I did send it to them, when did I send it? Monday. Nope, that was a different thing.
But the, 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 but the study itself is completed.
The study itself, correct, and the report is completed. It's with Lucas Environmental.
Yep, I sent it to them last Thursday, so they've had it almost a week.
Okay.
But they didn't give me a timeline, so I can follow up with them tomorrow and let you know, but.
So. Yeah, um, I, I did also receive an email, uh, from the butter. And I don't know if you've been, you, you got a copy of it?
I received, yes. I received, myself, I received a copy today forwarded to, uh, to me from, uh, Mr. Charville, Attorney Charville.
Okay.
So he received it, I believe, last night.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, I mean, to me, that's something that I think goes on to, uh, to Lucas. Lucas would, would do, I mean, it's a stormwater question.
Correct, yes.
Um, that's the way, I, it's, I think we just need to make, you know, make that available to them. They can consider that as part of their, their review.
Can you, I was not copied on that. Can you send it to me and I'll forward it off to? If it's stormwater, it'll likely go to Howard Stein.
Yeah, I was gonna say, actually, it's probably not Lucas. It's probably, yeah, okay. I have a hard time keeping it all straight.
Send that to me. I'll get that off to whoever it needs to go to.
Yeah, I'll, I'll do that. Uh, in fact, I'll do that before we leave this evening. How's that? That way I don't forget.
Perfect.
Um, but, so is it, do you, you're, are you agreeable then to the, the 18th, you think?
Yes, we are.
Should we be okay with that? What country will you be in, Doris? As long as it has Wi-Fi.
I know, it's cheaper Wi-Fi.
Yeah, you, you baby zone. He's literally, he's like, I don't know where Paul is. Did we say the 13th?
18th.
Eighteen.
No.
That would be something new and different.
Please, no. Yes.
Correct.
It is.
Yeah, yeah, I'm already, already on it, but, yeah, yeah, no problem.
Okay. Doug and, or, or Paul, any, any concerns there from you?
No, works for me.
No concerns, whatever the consensus is.
Okay. Um, and as far, I think you met, you mentioned as well in the email about extending the deadline.
Yes, I had submitted, um, an extension letter to Laura, I think earlier this week.
Yeah, I think that's right.
Yeah, I filed that, I think, on Monday.
Okay.
We're all, that's until July 31st.
Okay, I was gonna say, that was into July, if I remember correctly. Okay, July 31st. Okay, uh, was there, was there anything else you wanted to share with the board this evening?
No, I think just the continuance is, uh, is the only topic I had for today.
Okay. All right, so, yeah, we wanna, we wanna vote on continuing, correct.
We don't need to close the public hearing for continuing.
No, no, we, we just, yeah, we just.
Make a motion to approve the.
To continue.
Make a motion to, uh, continue the public hearing for one to one, wait.
This is 250 to zero. To June 18th.
To June 18th.
At 7:30 PM.
At 7:30 PM.
We do. We have two others, so we can put this at 7:30.
Okay, perfect.
I'll second the motion.
Okay. Thank you. All right, um, motion to continue the public hearing to June 18th at, uh, 7:30 PM has been made with a second. All in favor, respond with aye. Oppose nay. Doris?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Doug?
Aye.
Paul?
Yes.
Yes, okay, and Williams' aye, okay? Continued to June 18th, 2025 at 7:30.
Thank you.
Have a good night, George.
You as well. Do you want me to stick around for the, um, discussion of the subdivision easement plans? Can I comment on it?
Yeah. Yeah, um, so, yeah, the, uh, in, in terms of our agenda, we, there, that was the last public hearing. Other business property before the board is the subdivision and easement plans. Now, did you see, there, there was comments on easements not being enough, uh, to cover various? I don't want to go into the details.
Yes.
You have it, right?
Yes, I do, and I can comment on it quickly, um, and I'm sorry, I forgot the peer reviewer who conducted the.
LDC.
LDC, yes, uh, Land Design Collaborative, um, had commented basically two things. They've, they made two comments, and that is, our proposed easement line, uh, was somewhat within the limit of work that we had proposed on our site plans. So the easement wasn't expansive enough, specifically around the area of the septic leaching field and the septic system in general. So, um, and also additionally, there's a riprap next to the detention basin just north of the proposed 40B building. It's just a little jet-out triangle. Um, it's very easy to see. And, uh, the way it was designed is it was somewhat encroaching in the 20-foot, uh, no touch, no disturb area. So I've had, uh, expedited engineering, um, reconfigured that. So the riprap is completely outside the 20-foot no setback, and it was just a slight change. It's really not significant at all. Um, but it's no longer encroaching on the 20-foot no disturb. And we've expanded the easement area around, um, around the septic system leaching field. So those are now with our land surveyor and, uh, they are making those changes. I was hoping to have the plans for you guys tonight, but unfortunately, just, uh, they're, they're still working on it. So we do plan to have them to you shortly.
Okay.
And hopefully, it'll be ripe for endorsement. Is, and, uh, Attorney Tallerman also had some comments that we're also, um, including in this next set of plans.
So, so essentially their concerns are being addressed.
Yes.
They just don't have the plans.
Correct.
Completed, okay. All right, very good.
All right.
Okay.
All right.
Um, yeah, I think, I, I think, I think that's it, right? I don't think we had anything else to discuss as far as that.
And then I can just add it to the agenda for June 18th.
Yeah. Great.
Yeah, you should have, you expect to have that, uh.
Uh, yeah, I was hoping to have it earlier this week. It just didn't get done. So I would imagine later this week or at the worst, early next week.
Okay.
So you'll have it for our next hearing for sure.
Okay. As soon as you get it to me, too, I'll send it back over to Wayne, just to have him take a peek at it and make sure.
Perfect, great. All right. Well, thank you.
All right.
Have a good evening.
Thanks, George. George, too.
Aye, thank you.
Okay. Other business property before the board, approval of meeting minutes. Other business property before the board, approval of meeting minutes, and all we, we just had the one?
Yeah.
April thirtieth?
Um, I was not able to get the May seventh meeting minutes done, I will have those for the next meeting, and then I know that I failed to put them in the SharePoint until this afternoon, so. My apologies for that one.
That took, I, I, I took a look at, at those, and I had no issues with them, I think they were one hundred percent accurate. Anybody else have, have a look?
They came late in the day for me, I was not able to read them, so, I apologize.
No, that's, it's entirely my fault.
I don't live on my email after, in the afternoon.
Yeah, I, well, in, in, in Laura's defense, I would say, almost every time, the minutes are there, they just, this is, this is one exception, so.
It's really okay. Always are. I, I thought that there was a huge problem, I was very surprised, I didn't wanna bother her with it either.
No, please do.
Oh, I did.
Oh, you did, I did not.
Please do.
I was just wondering for a sec.
Uh, Doug or Paul, any comments or questions on the April thirtieth minutes?
No comments. Me neither, I thought they were wonderful.
Are you two in the same room?
I swear to God, right?
No.
Or you're of the same mind, I-
Make a motion to approve the minutes as drafted.
Second.
All right, motion to approve the minutes for April thirtieth, twenty twenty five, has been made with a second, all in favor, respond with aye, opposed nay, Doris?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Doug?
Aye.
Paul?
Yes.
And William's aye, okay, that approves the meeting minutes. Uh, only item left on the agenda, administrative updates, upcoming schedule, and we know we've got June, actually, I'll let you do that.
Yeah, no, so we have June eighteenth, we have two special permit applications, and then the forty B for two fifty, and then after that, hopefully it's not until July sixteenth, I believe. So are you guys okay with that July sixteenth date? Um, I just wanna lock them in for any applications that we get for that.
It's in my calendar, that's a normal, the normal day.
Yeah, I heard, or regular thing.
I'm good, I'm careful.
July sixteenth?
Yes.
I'm, I'm hesitating, just because something about it seems familiar, and I just, I'm concerned, I'm gonna say, no problem, and, and, and the next day, I'm gonna find out, you can't do it because, all right, let me.
That date works for me, no problems of mine.
Great, thank you. Paul, are you okay with July sixteenth?
Yep, it sounds fine.
Yeah, I-
Yes.
I'm gonna say yes, I, I don't, I can't imagine, there's a Wednesday where I'm supposed to be somewhere else.
At seven o'clock.
July, July sixteenth?
July sixteenth. So I anticipate a couple of applications for that one, so I just wanna make sure that we have a solid date, so I can do the public hearing notices. We are two applications away from our total application number.
For last year, do you remember the year we had nothing? Wasn't there a year?
That was before my time.
That was, yeah.
There was a year.
I got hired and we got everything.
I see. Laura, on our, if we can squeeze it in, it doesn't have to be, I wanted to talk about the current code on ADUs. Not, not ADUs, accessory dwelling units, what we call it, the part of our code, accessory dwelling unit.
Accessory apartment.
Yeah.
That's up to you guys, it's just not on the agenda, so I wouldn't go into too much about that.
Nope, I'm not gonna go, but next meeting.
Oh, next meeting, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Next meeting, I'll come up with it, I got like just two points, okay?
Yeah.
Okay, so.
No, that definitely needs to be debated.
Just kinda step back a thought and see what people's feedback is. That's it, that's not talking about, that's just getting it on the agenda. It has, it, we can't talk about it.
No.
I was literally like, I'd already-
Gonna talk about it.
Yeah, yeah, sorry for bringing up the memories, Mike.
Oh, it was more, the, the school thing was more, much more interesting.
Did you, I missed you, I saw David. I was at that meeting.
So, Paul?
Paul?
We, we don't have any more business, Paul.
It's my, it's my time, it's my time to shine?
Your time to shine, Paul.
I can feel the rays of sun.
I would like to make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All right, motion to adjourn has been made with a second, all in favor, respond with aye, opposed nay, Doris?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Doug?
Aye.
Paul?
Yes.
And William's aye, all right, adjourned meeting, thanks, everybody.